To our business meeting, if you will, please rise for the invitation. Pledge allegiance in the moment of silence.
All right, let's pray. God, thank you so much, Lord, just for another beautiful day. Thank you for the rain that you've given us this summer, Father. Just thank you for the life that's grown up all around us, Father. We just praise you for the things that are happening in and around the community as are our children. Went back to school this week, Father. I just lift up our students and our teachers and all the support staff and more, just our families as we enter into another year of education, Lord. We just pray over this evening and all the matters that we're speaking of tonight. Just thank you for what you're doing in and around us. We love you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence and recognition of U.S. military serving here and abroad in all public safety. You may be seated. Welcome to the Patrick County Board of Supervisors meetings where our local governing body convenes monthly or bi-monthly to address community matters that are under the purview of the board. We uphold civility as a cornerstone of our proceedings and expect all attendees to conduct themselves accordingly. There's always opportunity for public engagement, including scheduled public comment and additional public hearings on specific agenda items. We encourage active participation from our residents. In addition to these meetings, your Board of Supervisor representative is readily available for communication by email and/or phone outside of the formal session. Please be advised that outbursts or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We aim to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all attendees. Thank you for your cooperation and involvement in shaping the future of our community. Up first, we have the approval of the meeting agenda. If there was someone would like to, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make the motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the approval of the minutes from July 14th and July 28th. If there are no problems, we'll just put those together and take those in one motion.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, the approval of the bills, claims and appropriations. Entertain a motion for those. You should have a chance to look over them.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Got a few questions.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll second it now. We'll have discussion. Any discussion?
I do.
Okay.
There was a couple of things I didn't quite recognize or understand. I think it was page 17, Apco International Incorporated, $5,000. Telecon annual maintenance, what's that?
That's for the E-911 dispatcher department and all their annual contract they have. It's an annual software maintenance fee.
Software. I guess the next one was Capital Outdoor Incorporated, 525 times five times. And it said Highway 58, Abram Pen Parkway.
Those are tourism expenditures for billboards.
Okay. And then another one, Clever Point, page 18, $10,563.75 preliminary audit.
Clever Point CPAs, those are the accounting firm that we use to work with our auditors.
Okay. And I guess the next one was CNH Industrial Accounts, $49,025.83.
That's the annual lease on the transfer station loader.
I had a question on that, though. No, I think when we did that thing, supposedly one of the caterpillars had to have $65,000 to spend on it. So we voted to do that lease thing, but yet I noticed the John Deere loader sitting at the maintenance department, that they're still running the caterpillar that needed to be repaired?
That I can't answer.
I'd like to know. I've been aiming to ask that for a while. If we spent the $65,000 on it, still using it, that ain't quite what we agreed on that night.
We didn't spend the $65,000.
Well, how did we still be using it, you reckon?
Again.
That's, we probably have to go to our transfer station manager and ask him exactly what you're using it for.
I'd like to know that.
I know they needed to keep a backup, so I'm assuming it's a backup.
The excuse that night was that loader wasn't safe to run, needed $65,000 spent on it. But I noticed the John Deere had been sitting in a maintenance shop for probably six or seven months, so they gotta be running the caterpillar.
We can follow up with our transfer sta-- we do have a new, the transfer station manager we have now has been with us for about 11 months.
Well, let me know. I'd like to know that. And let's see, another one, I got page 20, $4,047.82 to Rogue County Administration on the Credit Card GM Equipment.
Yes, so that was a reimbursement. So Anthem, part of our insurance, we get a $5,000 wellness credit that had to be used by June 30th. And so Anthem repays us for that. So that was part of a wellness initiative for our employees. And it pays for some body weight equipment in the community college room at the community college building. So it's reimbursed by Anthem.
And we were, we did receive that reimbursement in July.
Okay. Let's see, another one. I'll let that one go. I wonder why we're still doing Verizon Wireless, $240 emergency services cell phone. About everything else switched to T-Mobile.
And it must be based on where they get the most coverage, guys here.
That may be our jetpack, I'm not sure which one it is.
Maybe you're right.
Our Wi-Fi support.
Okay. I was wondering, is that $240, right steep? And then Center Technologies, I didn't understand some of that. There was, I believe, three different charges, maybe seven times. Anyway, part of it was Uptown Suites, $220.80 on 78 and 79.
That's when he travels to do in-house work for us. And you'll see those expenses again as he trains our new IT director.
I was wondering, is that, that's right steep? And I don't remember years ago that we paid him for traveling and stuff. I thought all that was contracted.
This is about the third year that we've, that we've paid for the travel.
Okay. That's all I had.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Up next, we have the public hearing for the election district polling location. The announcement was the Patrick County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Monday, August 11th, 2025 on the proposed redistricting ordinance to approve the Russell Creek polling location. I will open the public hearing. And I believe we had no one sign up for public hearing for that. So with that, I will close the public hearing. Do we need a motion to approve that change now? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, once y'all are done with the public hearing and everything, yeah, a motion to approve the ordinance as updated.
So we didn't have anyone sign up for the public hearing for that. So I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve that change.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote with Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Up next, we have the public hearing for the Patrick County Board of Supervisors. We'll hold a public hearing Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 6:00 PM to hear comment on amending the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget with an increase of $931,101.31 from unspent 2024, 2025 funds for the Patrick County Public Schools. I will open that public comment. And once again, we have no one signed up for public comment on that. So with that, I'll close public comment. And I'm looking to entertain a motion to make that change.
And this is the carryover funds, correct?
Correct.
Now, I'll make that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote with Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick.
Aye.
Mr. Perry.
Aye.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Next, we have the transient occupancy tax ordinance. The Patrick County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Monday, August 11th, 2025 on the proposed transient occupancy tax. At the May 27th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, a motion to increase the levy of the transient occupancy tax amount from 5% to 6% was passed. In order to be compliant with the motion, the transient occupancy tax ordinance must be amended to reflect the board's action. I will open the public comment on that as well. And I have no one signed up for that public comment, so I will close that. And I will entertain a motion to make that change in the transient occupancy tax.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall.
No.
Mr. Kendrick.
No.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes. And that concludes our public hearings. We'll move on to the public comment. Public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the board. To maintain a respectful and constructive environment, please adhere to the following guidelines. Addressing the board, please direct all comments to the board as a whole, refraining from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or county. Respectful conduct, please. Personal attacks, as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of topics, comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer, public comment is not a question and answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permission from the chair. Enforcement, the chair may make rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility, only residents of Patrick County or property owners in Patrick County are eligible to address the board during the public comment period. Time limit, each speaker will be allowed five minutes for their comments. The board clerk will signal when five minutes has passed. The speaker is allowed additional one minute to complete their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak for up to 10 minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair's authority, the chair has the authority to manage the time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking times, or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. Sign up procedure, assignment sheet will be available on the podium for citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign up, and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments, speakers may provide copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment session. Up first, we have Kurt Bosenmeyer from Smith River about tourism.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bosenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the board regarding the implementation of the Patrick County Tourism Advisory Council. The Tourism Advisory Council was created at the February 12th, 2007 meeting of the Board of Supervisors, where the Assistant County Administrator at that time advised that the proposed council would be beneficial to the county's future tourism efforts and long-range planning of same. At that same meeting, the Board of Supervisors voted to request that the state legislative delegation undertake the creation of the Patrick County Tourism Authority. It is unknown whether that request was ever fulfilled. Since that time, the Tourism Advisory Council has been increasingly excluded from any, quote, advisory, unquote, consultation regarding any changes to the tourism department's staffing, budget, and plans. The tourism department has now been merged into a combined economic development and tourism office without consulting the advisory council. The tourism director position has been merged into the economic development and tourism director, reducing the amount of time devoted to tourism and saving one's salary. The Tourism Advisory Council has never been asked to provide input to the budget allocations in the five years that I have served on the council. Now, the county administration is proposing substantial changes to the tourism sponsorship grant application process, item 11 on tonight's agenda, again, without consulting the council to consider any sensible changes. The revised program significantly omits any reference to the possible diversion of unused funds at the end of the program cycle, which by default would remain in the general fund in violation of the transient occupancy tax legislation. I also fear possible mingling of tourism funds with EDA money. Please consider postponing changes to the sponsorship grant program until the Tourism Advisory Council is permitted to review and comment on it. Item 6 on tonight's agenda is another attempt to increase the county's transient occupancy tax from 5% to 6%, the additional funds to go directly to the county rather than to tourism. As a taxpayer, I am unhappy that the county is sitting on $3.5 million in excess reserve funds, which came from Patrick County taxpayers, and is doing nothing more than generating interest, yet the county proposes another tax increase. This move will do little more than increase the burden on lodging operators. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Steve Ferring from Dan River about the parks.
I called about a week ago and asked if you would put my comments on parks and the proposal thereof on tonight's agenda under new business. That didn't happen. So my proposal regarding the funding and use of our county parks is, one, terminate the lease agreement between Patrick County Agricultural Fair, Inc., and negotiate to reduce the 50,000 agreement to lease only the ball fields at a reduced rental. For instance, a new $1,200 lease amount would produce a $48,000 savings to the county. We don't use the buildings for the parks and wreck. We use the ball fields. Let's just lease those and maintain them. The resulting savings would contribute to the maintenance of all of our other parks, especially utilities and infrastructure. This would ensure that all parks are maintained in the same, the same standard and that all facilities meet code. The individual volunteer boards that have been tasked with the maintenance and infrastructure costs will now be able to use such funds as they raise for activities in their parks. Additionally, the county should make an effort to consolidate tracts donated to our park system under trust and other legal devices. Under the existing documents, owner of, ownership of some of the tracts may no longer be valid. In some cases, the county may not be able to retain ownership of improvements made to those tracts. It also limits our liability. Requests for improvements to parks should be considered on a case-by-case basis and funded by the county if so approved. The separate funding allocation for the Stewart Pool should remain and be increased slightly. Parks and recreation will have a separate budget for programs and personnel, easy to delineate. The county is currently obligated with the maintenance at more than 60 grand a year of seven flood control dams located on private property in Ararat. The county and its general population get no benefit from this arrangement. But since the owners of six of these seven dams have deeded right of ways to the county to access the ponds and dams, designate this as Wilderness Park, open to county residents for fishing. The county would not add any facilities or improvements to these tracts other than signage, cheap. Any property owner objecting to the use of the right of way would have the option to petition the state to do their own maintenance, thus saving the county the cost of maintenance for that dam. This package of proposals is very close to being revenue neutral, but will expand recreation opportunities for county residents and possibly avoid future liabilities to the county. We recommend that you approve this, and would like to have the discussion tonight. This has been on your agenda for two months. We'd like to have some action. But you just seem to ignore us. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Trina Anderson from Creedus Creek.
For more than 16 months, citizens, taxpayers, and the local press have banged our heads against the wall of this Board of Supervisors, the county administrator, and the sad and destructive happenings occurring in this county. 16 months of being ignored, belittled, lied about, lied to, abused, defamed, libeled, slandered, threatened, and followed, while some of our elected representatives sit up here on this DS, acting superior to those who elected them to represent our wishes for our county, our home. Tonight, I say enough. Many citizens have requested, negotiated, and pleaded for you to do the right thing for those of us you were elected to represent. Some of you have thoroughly failed to do the job we elected you to do. Some supervisors on this board have committed actual and specific criminal and civil offenses against citizens and each other. Some of you have upheld other supervisors' bad and criminal behavior. How do you keep your heads up in public? How do you justify your apathy in view of the real problems each of us face while living in Patrick County? How do you justify allowing citizens who are not afraid to stand up and speak out to be bullied, abused, and victimized by supervisors and the administrator? It's appalling. How do you sleep at night or look at yourselves in the mirror? Large number of people in Patrick County didn't want our home defiled by solar farms. We stood up and we fought back. Since that moment in time, representatives on this board, the county administrator, and the county attorney have abused those you swore an oath to represent and protect. You've abused what you feel is your power. You've abused individuals who want nothing more than to improve Patrick County. You've abused those with the courage to speak up and speak out for what's important to us and what should be important to you. Pardon me, got a glitch. For 16 months, many residents and taxpayers have risked their reputations, their jobs, their privacy, their mental health, and their way of life because the issues we all face together are important. These same issues should be important to you as well. Many people in this room have had the courage to stand up and speak out. They have the courage to fight for what they believe is right, just, and important. They have the courage to stay in Patrick and continue to fight. If those of you up there are weary of every issue being a battle, then you remind yourselves who and what we're all fighting for. We're fighting for a better life and future for us, our children, and our grandchildren. Remind yourselves that every issue can be solved by listening and negotiating. Every issue doesn't have to be a battle. Members of this board and the county administrator have chosen these battles. True courage is a rare thing. Courage is doing the right thing while fearing the unknown. I've witnessed some people sitting in this room display courage. They've overcome their fear of public speaking, reprisal, and retribution, and they're still here, still opposing the monster this county government has become. I admire and applaud each and every one of them. Thank you to those people. Three supervisors on this board, Clayton Kendrick, Andrew Overby, and interim supervisor Jane Falk have displayed true courage as well. They get it. They listen. They do their best to make the very best choices for those they swore to represent. They, the rest of you are cowards. My mind can't grasp what is it that you fear? Progress for Patrick County? Getting sued? Heck, one of your fellow supervisors threatens to sue you every week, every month. When he doesn't get his way or his feelings gets hurt, big deal. It's nothing. He's not worth your concern. Some on this board are afraid to fire the administrator because they're afraid she'll sue. Get over it. You have grounds. You know it, we know it. The grounds are well-known, well-documented. Stop bowing down to her and start being concerned about those of us who elected you to, and you swore an oath to represent. That is your job. It's become blatantly obvious that the county administrator runs your show. She dictates to this board how things will be done, ignores your requests, your emails, and your directions. Please allow me to remind you, this board, that you run Patrick County. You don't work for her. It's time to stand up, gentlemen.
Thank you. Up next, we have Chris Hughes from Mayor River District.
Well, first thing I want to say is shout out whoever made the decision on installing these mini splits here. Great job. Hey, so some of you guys know me from Springs of Life Camp or my role in the Patrick County Ministerial Association. Just wanted to, again, just take a moment to just give some encouragement to the, to you guys, the people in this room, and whoever might be chiming in on the website, watching the stream or whatever. There, something has been put into motion well before, man, most of us were even around. And I just want to read something from the Book of John out of the Bible. John, Chapter 12, verses 31 and 32, these are the words of Jesus Christ. Jesus responded, "Now is the judgment of the world. Now the ruler of this world will be cast out." He goes on to say, "As for me, if I am lifted up, I will draw all people to myself." I'm a part of something called the Patrick County Family Discipleship Cohort. It's a group of churches, organizations, families all around Patrick County working together for one intentional goal, and that's to lift up the name of Jesus Christ and, again, proclaim the gospel in areas that might not be reached. And we saw something happen on Saturday, manifest, it was the fourth year that we did this. We had the privilege to actually host that over Rotary Field. And we saw about 500 people come. Lives were changed. It was just a beautiful event. But even bigger than that, just want to, again, encourage you that if this is one of your passions too, talking about Jesus and advancing what he does, I'm going to tell you right now, there was one video, and there's so many out there, one of them had over 25,000 views just since Saturday. And that is, again, intentional And that is, again, intentional rhythm and movement from the people in this community on pursuit together to accomplish big things for something so much bigger than us individually, but us together, God. So, again, just wanted to tell you guys that there are big, awesome things that are happening in and around the community through the people of Patrick County, man, even amongst all the stuff that's going on in and around and all the kind of stuff that we talk about. Just again, praise the Lord for what's happening, and I am honored to be a part of this community. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ed Poole from Peters Creek District about solar.
My name is Ed Poole, Peters Creek District. Good evening, fellas. How you doing? There's some old business that I want to draw your attention to. I'm going to cite some recent facts and why it's important. I believe 90 to 120 days ago, a decision was taken, there was going to be a letter prepared on the Commercial Street Solar Project to withdraw that or at least ask that there was a withdrawal. I haven't seen anything done on that that I'm aware of, unless you gentlemen know of something. I don't know who's responsible for this, but 90 to 120 days to write a letter seems a little excessive to me. If it was hired out, we've got the talent here to do that, you might consider that. And what I'm going to bring up is, in Henry County, Interjects was just fined $120,000 by DEQ again. Axton Solar, Interjects Project, $3.3 million civil liability case has now been filed. They have posted bonds for $18 million for some of the 49 cases that are involved in litigation around the state. What I'm trying to say directly, these are bad actors, these are bad characters. You need to get them out of here. And if that letter hadn't been written, I don't know who's responsible, I just would highly encourage you to get it done. I also want to diplomatically complain a little bit about a FOIA request that was dropped on myself and Vance Agee. And for those of you that don't know, Vance's wife passed away last week, that's why he's not here. The FOIA request was fine. Everybody has a right to do that. It was one of you supervisors that dropped that on us. But you dropped it on working papers. Working papers, nothing final. That required interaction between myself and senior partner Chris Dedac and Vance. I don't know if the law firm will bill you for that time, but that seems to be a waste of resources, especially since the planning commission has a liaison, Supervisor Overby. It would seem to me if there's anything people want to know, should go to Andrew and be dealt with in that way. So you wasted my time, you wasted resources for nothing, for nothing. The second thing I want to say is that the board voted to have the law firm do a review, which is absolutely fine, as long as it's a legal opinion, written out, legal opinion, not just written paragraphs. I don't know, man, that's kind of where I'm at with that. It's a little hard to work through things. You made that ruling on Monday, we were going to vote on it Tuesday. I talked to Chris Dedac Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday morning, and he already had a copy of the 42-page ordinance. I don't even think you guys have seen that. Maybe you have now, but I don't know who shipped that down there, but it seems to be a little bit of outstep protocol. I've spent my life in corporations, from Fortune 100 down to private corporations, and this information flow, the way it's running, it's not being managed well. That's on you guys, so I'm complaining a little bit, if you'd allow me to. You need to snap up the reins on the horse here a little bit, run this thing like a professional operation, that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, again. I don't have too much to talk about. I have talked with Doug a little bit, and he's going to bring up some of the things we talked about earlier up on the mountain. And the biggest thing I see is our budget, even though we've only gotten through it, it's been approved. Some of the pay raises that was handed out are ridiculous. Somebody getting a $13,000 raise in two years. I like to get a raise like that, but I'm on a set income, and it was a 2.3. And like I said back then, apply the same to them. So, you know, I know next year's budget will be a humdinger. I know we've got tax assessments coming up, and of course, everybody's real estate's going to go way up, but of course, the way the laws are written, it only can go up so much, so that's good. But like I said, we need to sort of rein in a few things. I hope the problem with the Patrick Springs Park was handled about the water and sewer where they were getting billed by the county for a county entity, which was just crazy. So, just a few things for thought, and like I said, myself and Doug have talked about the park up there at Fred Clifton. I think he's going to bring up a few things on that, and I'll let him handle that. But, you know, $13,000 raise in two years, that's a lot of money. I'd love to have a raise like that, and I know a lot of other people in this county would too. So, next year, when it comes time to think about some things, think about that. Maybe that problem can be solved sooner than later, we don't know, we'll just have to watch and see. So y'all have a good day, and thank y'all very much.
So, close our public comment at this point. Up next, we have new business, the South Mayo River Dam Removal, DWR.
Am I going to be able to see the... Well, good evening, and I'll start out. Can you all see that? I don't know if the lights down would be better. Anyway, I'll proceed. Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm Louise Finger with the Department of Wildlife Resources, Stream Restoration Biologist, and I have with me Anna Wheeler with the Dan River Basin Association, and we are here to share with you a proposed structure removal project along the South Mayo near Stewart. It is a multistructure project, the four structures in total. The upstream structure is George's Mill Dam. Okay. George's Mill Dam, located upstream of town a little bit, and it's on private property. We're working with the landowner to remove that structure for public safety and stream health. It was the site of seven drownings over the course of history, the most recent being in the 80s, and there was significant community momentum to remove the structure then, but it didn't happen. So that is one of the structures we're working on. The next structure is downstream, just below Commerce Street, and it is a set of abandoned railroad bridge piers that, after storm events, collect significant woody debris and creates river obstruction. We're working with that private landowner for that removal. But I'm primarily here tonight to speak with you about the two downstream structures that are actually on county-owned property. The second set of railroad piers, you can see here, and the partially breached Clark Power and Light Company Dam, shown in this photo. So why removal? A lot of reasons. Primary reason is stream health. All of these structures impact water quality, lead to bank erosion, impact aquatic habitat, and affect the ability for the public to utilize and enjoy the river. This is a photo of bank erosion around George's Mill Dam. One of the other primary concerns for any kind of river barrier is fish passage and the ability of aquatic organisms to move upstream and downstream, primarily in the South Mayo. DWR is specifically interested in a small fish called the orangefin madtum, which is a state endangered fish, and removal of these structures will benefit their ability to have a strong and healthy population going forward. And it's not an insignificant issue, the public safety piece around all of these structures. Low-head dams create what is known as a boil or recirculating current downstream, and it does not take a large dam to create that scenario. Makes it very difficult for a swimmer, boater, anyone who's in the river that gets washed over that structure, it's very difficult to escape, and a serious concern with low-head dams. And then, a lot of people don't understand the issue with the bridge piers, but they, again, after storm events, collect woody material on them, and that creates a river strainer, such as in the photo here. And it might not look dangerous, but if you're in the water and as the water passes through all that wood, you can get trapped and drown very easily. So, again, significant public safety issues. So this is a photo of the plat of this property owned by the county. The outline is in green there, and the blue line shows the river flowing from left to right. The red arrow shows the location of the Clark Power and Light Dam. And it was built, the dam was built in 1916 to basically back the water up, and then it would go through a tunnel through the ridge line where that orange line is, and that change in water surface elevation after it goes through the tunnel created the energy to run a turbine to power Stewart's lights in the early electrical generation days. So this is another photo of the dam. As you can see, it is partially breached, is still, even on the lowest part of the dam, there's a four-foot drop, again, enough for a drowning hazard. And as you can see in the video on the right, where the water pours over, there's that turbulent boil even at low flow, but upstream, it looks really calm, so anyone in the water might not be aware of what's below the dam. Other concerns for this structure are structural integrity issues. This is one of the piers that is holding up that metal walkway, and there are multiple cracks and fissures. The video on the right shows where water is actually passing through under the structure, again compromising its integrity. And this is a better view of the bridge, which, Metalfoot Bridge, with some pretty serious concerns. This is the steps leading up to it. As you can see, they're suspended off the ground about five feet, very tempting to jump up there and climb up onto the bridge. And then the bridge itself has inadequate railing, safety barriers to prevent someone from falling off, falling 15 feet into the river below. The plan for removal is simple, it's basically break up the concrete structures with a hydraulic hammer and remove that material from the active channel to the stream bank that is currently eroding. And I wanted to share an example project. This dam is up in Lexington, or it was. It's of similar dimension to the George's Mill Dam, clearly bigger than the Clark Power and Light Company Dam, but again, a low-head dam with associated railroad bridge piers. During removal, people always want to know, is it exciting to use explosives? You know, it's not at all. We use a hydraulic hammer on one machine to break up the concrete, and then the other machine moves that material out of the active channel. This is a photo immediately after the removal was complete, and I took this photo a couple weeks ago. This was a site of a teenager that drowned in the community a bunch of years back. Again, it was difficult for the community to move forward, but now that whole stretch of river is thoroughly enjoyed by people in the community with no, you know, outward safety concerns. The city who owned the dam ended up being found liable for that drowning after years of litigation. It was a very difficult situation. The other structure on the county property, again, the red arrow at the dam, the second arrow shows the location of the railroad piers I mentioned earlier. This is a photo of them, and it's in the winter and it's hard to see, but there's bank erosion on both sides of the river where these piers are because during, like I said, periodic storm events, a lot of logs and trees will build up on these structures. This picture was taken before the nearby adjacent landowner actually removed the logs on his own, but it's a regular recurring situation. And when our fish biologists were sampling the river that day, they took this picture, they literally could not get upstream past this log jam and had to walk up and around. You can't see it super well because of the vines, but there's significant bank erosion there. Again, when the river can't go through where the piers and the logs are, it has to go around, and it's widening and creating erosion there. Simple plan for this project, break up the piers with a hammer, move that material into the eroded stream bank area, cover and vegetate, very straightforward. This is another example where we've done this exact same thing. It's a common occurrence for cities or VDOT or railroads to remove their bridge and leave the piers for someone else to deal with. And the red arrows in this photo, it's hard to see them because they're covered by logs and woody material, but those are the bridge piers left in this stream in Charlottesville. This photo was taken immediately after we removed the piers, and this photo was taken several years later, and you can see the banks have stabilized and trees are growing in, and the river is allowed to flow naturally. So, specific projects, everybody wants to know what's the money, what's the cost. For this project, the cost is simply rental of equipment, operator time, and materials. And we will be funding those costs by state wildlife grant through my agency, plus an Eco Ambassador Council grant from Dan River Basin, as well as in-kind contribution of partners. And we consider Patrick County a partner. We're hoping to have some staff contribution of in-kind time doing some of the... We're hoping to have some staff contribution of in-kind time, doing some of the equipment operation down at the county sites. But we're not seeking any cash from the county for these projects. The process is lengthy. A lot of the steps have been cleared already. All of the sites that I've mentioned tonight had a qualified architectural historian do a Phase 1 study, determined they were not eligible for the historic registry. Fish and muscle surveys have been completed. Surveys and drawings have been done of all the sites. We have acquired the funding. The permits have been drafted and pending signatures by the county. We'll be able to start construction when conditions allow, hopefully as early as October, but maybe as late as March, just depending on how things fall together. And so we are here to request the county's approval to move forward with these structure removals and provide signatures on the landowner agreement and permit application. So with that, we are open to questions if you have any.
Any questions from the board? Are the other two, I can't remember the name of the dam, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Georgia's Mill upstream.
Yeah, is that landowner on board with that?
Absolutely. We have a signed agreement. We've submitted the permit application, yes. And the other railroad pier owner is on board. He's sort of awaiting the process to proceed, so.
Contributions, are you asking from the county?
Essentially some in-kind staff time. The Meadow Bridge is going to have to be cut up, you know, a couple of days of staff time on site, and that's it.
Any questions from anybody else on the board? So, does the orangefin madtum actually go up and down the Mayo, or is it just pretty much?
I couldn't hear the first.
The orangefin madtum?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is it actually?
Yes. So it is, it is through, it is actually throughout that, that stretch. And so our, our, and I'm not a fish biologist, but our fish biologists, their feeling is it's less about, oh, there's no fish upstream, they're all downstream, we take the dam out, and now they can go upstream, than it's about genetic mixing. So when you have barriers, they're isolated genetically, and it just makes them less resilient going forward and being able to adapt and have a strong population, so.
As I say personally, I don't, every time I go on Commerce Street and cross the bridge, I look to the left of the old railroad piers, just to, just to look at them.
Yeah.
Stuart in a bygone era.
Say that again.
I said, thinking of Stuart in a bygone era of the trains.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of like when I go down 81 and look at the old railroad trestle up near Lexington, Virginia, on the side.
Yeah.
So that's something that I'm kind of not a fan of, but.
Yeah. No, and I, and I understand that, and I think, you know, there's potential going forward of, you know, sort of highlighting their presence if, you know, one day there's a river trail there and have, you know, an interpretive sign that actually lets people know, you know, what, what they were and why, you know, what, how they promoted the advancement of the town of Stewart, so. I totally hear you. I think it's more of, you know, having the ability for safe use of the river going forward. It's a little more of the forward-thinking, yeah, vision for, for the area, so.
I guess it would open things up for people doing some tubing or some like.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. And there's also, and, and I don't know how many, are you, have you ever heard of the Snorful Trail? So North Carolina has started a Snorful Trail. Maybe you want, would you want to speak to that a little bit?
It's huge. You guys should look it up on PBS.
And the bottom line is it's a way for people to get in the river and, and use a mask and snorful and, and see all the life that's in there. And the orangefin madtum is, you know, it's, it's a special fish, and it's right in your river, and it's the kind of thing that, you know, little kids can wade in and, and see it. It's, again, I think the opportunity for access and, and appreciation of the amazing resource you have right in your community would be huge.
Any other questions or comments? Then if not, I will entertain a motion to move forward with this.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One quick, so the in-kind, would that come from our maintenance, or where would that come from?
Well, I want the dams, what are we talking about, thinking one employee from the transfer station, heavy equipment operator, and then also utilizing one for maintenance.
And, and just so you know, we also have other project partners that are willing to fill in if there's gaps or, you know, we need more support. So love to have the involvement of the county staff. Again, we're flexible.
Sit here and say yes, but who is actually going to be doing it on ground?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I'll vote aye as much as I hate to see the pile into a way. Up next, we have Mr. Jason Moore of Patrick County Public Schools about polystyrene food service containers.
Yes, members of the board, as you are aware, we are in Virginia, and there's been a styrofoam ban. And one extra thing added to your plate, you are also charged with oversight of that. And so school systems were included in that styrofoam ban, and we are granted, with your permission, a 12-month grace period to remove current stock and inventory. So that would have to be a, a motion and approval from the Board of Supervisors to allow us to utilize current stock, so we do not have to dispose of that without using it for its original intention. So that's why I'm here today, just to ask for your blessing and approval to allow us to use our current stock. And that extension will expire in 12 months.
Will you have all the stock expended by then?
Oh, yes. We anticipate by Christmas, because we usually do that order in the spring and then another one mid-year. So, but we request in the 12 months.
So I'll entertain a motion to allow the use of the reserves, I assume, with the polystyrene food service container.
Make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Sandra Stone, Treasurer, about a year-end report.
Good evening. This is just our standard year-end, as of June 30th, report. You should have in your packet all of the funds that we composed at the end of the year. Trial balance shows the account balances at the end of June, shows the bank account balances at the top, and the individual fund account balances are listed below the bank balances. Our net general county fund balance carried forward at the end of June was $13,651,569. This was an increase from our last fiscal year. And our carryover balance comes from different sources. Department budget unspent funds, some revenues received are higher than budgeted, and some unspent carryover funds from previous year. Our carryover funds are needed and used during the lower revenue months, and usually these months are August through October and February through April. Our contingency fund balance at the end of June was $1,115,731. Interest earned on our investments was $477,343, and the interest earned on a bank checking deposits and so forth was $58,180. Those increases or decreases are based on the average percentage rate, so we are doing much better than we were previously. Interest wasn't quite as good this year as last year on the investments, but still overall done pretty well. New funds that we set up this year was the E-ticket fee, E-ticket fee fund, and that was through the court systems, and we were required to set that up, so that has been done. The delinquent tax list has been completed. Copies are in my office, and there's also one in county admin, and that's available to you at any time if you so choose to look at that. And our percentage of tax collections as of June 30th were, for year 23, personal property, we were at 98.7. At 24, personal property, we were at 95.21. 22, real estate, we were at 99.61. 23, real estate, we were at 91.12. 24, real estate, we were at 97.7. And 20, year 2025, or the current year, we, the first half, we were at 91% as of June 30th, which I want to commend my staff for a job well done. Delinquent taxes are collected daily. Our methods of collection include DMV stops, debt set-off, tax interception, wage liens, bank liens, treasurer administrative summons, real estate land sales, and monthly payment agreements. And that is my report. Any questions?
Any questions to the board? If not, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Report, thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Glenda Morse, Commissioner of Revenue, about the Personal Property Tax Relief Act update.
Good evening. Each year, the Personal Property Tax Relief Resolution is approved by the Board of Supervisors in order for taxpayers to receive a percentage off of qualified vehicles. Qualified vehicles being cars, trucks under 10,000 gross weight, and motorcycles. The approved amount is reflected on each person's personal property tax bill that will go out this fall. Patrick County receives $688,658 annually from the state. PPTR estimates are done each year to get as close as possible to exhaust this amount. The estimated percent at this time is 30.3%. That could change just a little. We have not completed the personal property book for 2025. That will be completed by the end of the month. I don't foresee that changing. Last year, it was a tenth of a percent. It was from 30.8 to 30.7. The purpose of voting on the resolution is for the taxpayers to receive some personal property tax off of those vehicles. This began in 2006, under Gilmore's, while he was governor. Each locality in the state received a fixed amount. That amount has stayed the same since 2006. At this time, we just need a resolution from the board to go with the 30.3%.
Any questions before we go forward on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to proceed with that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the updated tourism sponsorship grant application.
So our Director of Economic Development and Tourism is here too, as well, if we have any additional questions. But all the materials were included in your packet. This is really an administrative change, going from a rolling grant application to a twice-a-year grant application. It's been proven time and time again, federal grants, state grants, foundation grants, having timelines associated with grants make them more, people participate in, there's higher participation rates for set grants than having them just open whenever, because people tend to forget about them, or they're, they're not able to really be marketed because they're always out there. So this way, we'll, they'll be marketed twice a year. No funding has changed. The funding that was budgeted this year will be distributed. I would assume all the, all the money will be awarded. If there is extra money that is not applied for, then we can, you know, put that back out. Hey, we only got grant applications for $10,000, but we have $20,000. So nobody is trying to slight any, any, this program, any money. Like I said, the board, the money that was approved by the board this year will be, that will be what is awarded.
They should have had a chance to look at that in your packets. Any discussion on that before we move on? If not, I will entertain a motion for the updated tourism sponsorship grant application.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion to table it until the Tourism Advisory Council has a chance to review and provide us further feedback.
Okay, we have a motion to table this item until after the Tourism Advisory Council has a chance to meet and look over that and provide input. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second to that motion. Okay, so we're voting on tabling this until after the Tourism Advisory Council meets and provides some input?
May I, may I say something else? Sorry.
Yeah.
I'll be quite frank, I'm at the point administratively that I don't feel comfortable with the way the grants are currently being done. So that is one reason this has come forward. You know, I originally went to the Tourism Council in January of '24 and asked for some changes to be done. I've asked our auditor about it, I've asked our county attorney about it. There does need to be some additional oversight to these grants, so that's why I brought it to you today. I do believe this is time-sensitive. I do believe we need to, to move forward with some administrative changes of how, how the applications come in, how they're reviewed, how they're awarded. That is why I was brought to you, before you today. This was not, this is not something we just thought of, hey. It wasn't something that like, oh, it's not broke, let's go fix it. It is broken, and it needs to be fixed. So I would appreciate at least the additional oversight part.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Mr. Howtins, I don't know if you can answer these for me right off the top of your head, or anybody else in the room. Roughly how much money is, goes out to this grant, these grants a year? Do you know off the top of your head?
Eighty-six, eighty-six thousand was budgeted this year. Forty-six thousand has already been approved in June and July. So first two out of 12 months, forty-six thousand has already been allocated. So doing this twice a year will make it a little bit more, instead of, because right now, it's a first-come, first-served. So say I'm having an event next, in the winter or something, and I didn't realize that all that money was going to be, you know what I'm saying? It's just, it's not giving opportunity for things, for people who kind of aren't already in the know of this and having events earlier in the year. And we, if you go back, and you look years past, most of the money is allocated early in the year, so there's not money available for the second, the second half of the year.
So there is no rhyme or reason as to how the, so if I'm planning to do something next April, I would submit my application July 1st of this year? So that's how?
No, so if you were doing it in April, you would, so the, what the proposed grant cycle is, you would apply in September?
Okay. That's the proposed. What is it currently? Currently it's?
It just says 60 days before, but honestly, that has not been adhered to.
But if it's 60 days before, could there, in his events in April, could theoretically the money already be used up?
In theory, yes, because right now, it's first-come, first-served.
Mr. Howtins, what are you seeing with this? Is this?
Well, the other tax council had been looking at doing it twice a year. And in some ways, the twice a year would allow us more opportunity to take a look at all of the grants in. What we currently do is the 60 days before the events. Right now, we have eighty-six thousand dollars, again, that's been budgeted, we've already spent, we've got about forty-six thousand. If you look back over the history of the sponsorships, we're pretty much regrouping each year to a certain extent on it, based off what was budgeted. But again, this is just trying to, in some ways, bringing in line with the DTC.
Thank you.
I'm going to modify my motion to. I'm going to modify my motion to institute a freeze on any future grant approvals until we have a chance to take this up again.
Okay.
But just still table until after the TAC has a chance to review and provide input.
So you made the original motion. Mr. Kendrick, did you second?
I second.
Will you withdraw your second to the original?
Yeah.
Okay, so we now have a second, I'm sorry, a new motion that would freeze any of the awarding of grants until after the Tourism Advisory Council has a chance to look at this, and after it comes back to the Board of Supervisors to decide about the grant application. So no more money going out for these grants until that. So we have a motion. Is there enough, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second at this point. Okay, any discussion now?
Yeah.
If, if we're going to table this, I would really like to see a timeline on it. So there again, if they've been talking about doing this for so long, and they haven't, I think if, if they want to discuss it, and they want to weigh in, then it needs to be sooner rather than later. So if we're going to table this, I would say, let's table it until the next month, so we can move forward with this, so that instead of having to say, well, we'll, we'll get back to it when they get around to it, here we are, you know, December, and they still haven't gotten around to it.
Well, that's the part, the point of freezing the funds, because then they're going to take it up quickly, as opposed to waiting around.
So if we're going to table it, I'd like to see it tableed until next month, so that gives them, they'll have time to meet between now and next month, or their meeting does fall.
Next week, yeah.
So they would have to make a decision next week, get back to us. That's how.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, is there any interest on the board of turning the Advisory Committee into a, an authority? No.
Not for me.
Nope.
Okay. So no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on tabling this until after the Transit Advisory Council, Tourism Advisory Council meets, and freezing the awarding of any additional grants until after a decision is made by them, and us as the Board of Supervisors as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, Mr. Marshall?
Yeah.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. Up next, last item under new business, is the asbestos abatement, former True Value Building.
You've already got it inside of your board package. All we're really doing is to get you all to just approve the lowest bidder in the asbestos abatement, so we can get this taken care of inside of the true bag.
Okay.
And right now, the lowest bidder would have been AA Consulting Construction. If y'all see that in your package.
Give him the microphone, please. We're just looking for board approval for the lowest bidder on the asbestos abatement.
Do we have that, Kelly?
EDA. EDA?
EDA.
Yes.
Okay. So I think you all have a chance to look over that. I'll entertain a motion to go with the lowest bidder, which was, I'm sorry, it's, you said it was AA?
AA.
A and A? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go ahead and get to old business and reports, if y'all are good of that, and then we'll take a brief recess before we move into closed meeting, unless anybody needs to stop right now. Okay, moving on to old business, reserves formerly ARPA requests.
Good evening. Were you talking, Mr. Wood, about that you want to start with the DMV project?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Would you pull the microphone up to use that?
Yes, sir, I apologize.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. On May twenty-second, the state fire marshal came in and conducted an inspection. He found numerous citations, all the citations were addressed by the county maintenance department, they took care of it. The one thing that he did find in his violation was the DMV itself. If you looked directly at the main door that the DMV staff uses as the main window, what we propose is putting a fire shutter door in place of the half door that we have, and then we have to enclose the bottom of that door, make it drywall. If you continue down to the second window where DMV works, that too is a fire hazard. So what we proposed was putting in a second shuttered window, fireproof shutter window to main the fire corridor, take the existing rated corridor door there, and move it to the side, and build a wall in-house. Jason Brown, our great county building guy, he walked me through it, we walked through it. Ms. Beth had me contract, excuse me, contact a contractor to give us a extremely good, rough estimate. He looked at the doors, and the price that we came up was twenty-five thousand dollars to do such. That would be the top. Do I have any questions on that?
So I'm just asking real quickly, the twenty-five thousand, and I'm hearing two shutters?
Yes, sir.
What other construction had to be done? Could you explain that one more time to me?
Yes, sir. If you were standing in front, looking at the DMV main window, if you went into the corridor where the voting office is, and to the right, we would enclose where that existing door, we keep that propped open, that's a violation of the safety code. If those doors do stay propped open, they have to be wired, and so if the fire alarm rings, those doors will automatically shut. So we would take the existing door that remains propped open currently, which is not proper, we would put a wall on the face of that. We would take that existing door, move it to the left, and then wall that. So we actually increase our office space, which is advantageous to the staff as well, because currently, those two ladies do a wonderful job, and honestly, they're in a really small area. The counter space isn't proper for them, the right height, it takes a toll on them. So what we would do is, we would enclose those walls, we would frame them, Mr. Wood, make sure our maintenance crew can do that. Like I said, Jason Brown talked to me, we have the abilities to do that. So really, to, the, the cost of the construction would be to install the two fireproof shutter doors to maintain the fire corridor, wire them into the existing fire system that we have, so if the alarm rang, the doors would automatically shut, and then finish the interiors of the wall as well.
Allow us, the members of the board, is any reason to break this into two motions, or just?
You're good at doing it in one?
Let's keep it clean and do it in two.
I have one service and saying one, one doing two, somebody else tell me.
I'm good either way, and I, I think it's.
Okay, we'll do it in two real fast then. That's what I would have preferred. So we have a motion to, and you will send out for bids, and hopefully, that, that's the absolute max that we're going to spend.
So I can't promise you that's the absolute max. I could tell.
Yeah, so I mean, we wouldn't go anything above.
Right.
So what we're asking y'all to do is approve the funding for both of these items, and once we know that we have the funding, then we would follow our procurement.
Okay.
So what we did, and I'll be honest with you, we had a great company, did the Circuit Court, really took his time, did a lot of extra work for us, so we asked him to come in and price the doors and give us a quote. And we didn't put any fudge in there, Mr. Wood, but I, I am extremely confident that if Ms. Beth and our team puts the bid out, it will not go over, like she said, the twenty-five thousand dollars, sir.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion for the upgrading the fire doors at the DMV up to twenty-five thousand.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
It's for the total office improvement, not just the doors, correct?
Correct, that's the shutter, sir, and we'll use the existing fire door to save money, and we'll, we'll just install it on the left-hand full bark, the full, left-hand bulkhead, excuse me.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you for allowing us to pursue that. I know the employees there work hard, and it'll increase their efficiency and make them happy. The second item, gentlemen, was the, Ms. Beth asked us the same principle, to get a local contractor to give us a rough estimate for landscaping services. The landscaping services would include grounds of the Circuit Court area, grounds of the administrative building, and the parking lot islands located between both facilities, as well, as well as around the old school board building. The quote that we had was a six thousand dollars initial cleanup. Ongoing weekly inspections, well, they wouldn't check it weekly, maintain all grounds with mulch, and any services would be twelve fifty a month. So your estimated total annual cost is twenty-one thousand dollars a year. The contractor did state that he would be willing to sign that contract for two years if you so desired, obviously without the additional six thousand dollars, but he would maintain the monthly cost of twelve fifty for twenty-four months. We did not put it up for bid for the lowest bidder, I think that's probably what you were going to ask me. We just wanted to give you a, Ms. Beth wanted to make sure you had a rough, good estimate on what we feel will probably be a standard.
Do we have a plan for what work is going to be done?
Yes, sir. We'll put it in a bid when we do. I, I walked through with the contractor, Mr. Overby, you know, but yes, to answer your question, we'll put everything.
Tree trimming and stuff.
Absolutely, especially around the Circuit Courthouse, I mean, that, that is, that's a, that's, that's abhorrent over there, you know, the trees need trimmed, the bushes, the bushes are bigger than trees. I wish I grew my Christmas trees that well. But we would put it out for bid, and we would have a, a statement of work with specs to include, you know, the frequency and the tasks performed by the contractor.
And again, that's an estimated, so you won't go over that.
Yes, sir, as long as Ms. Beth agrees, yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's not in the budget though, is it?
That's, that's why we're bringing it to y'all.
Right, yes, sir.
Just to approve the funding, reallocation from what was, we've been calling as ARPA reserves.
I, I don't have a problem with the initial cleanup, but I, I don't like using the ARPA funds for recurring costs and recurring additional expenses down the road. What kind of additional maintenance are we going to expect besides just mowing the yard after the work is completed?
Well, we didn't write the statement of work, but we did talk about that. We talked about making sure the beds in the existing areas had the proper mulch, edging, spraying, vegetation that's dangerous or not pleasant to view, trimming. I hate to say basic lands, landscaping services, but it was nothing exuberant, it's not like we asked them for anything special, but it was basic landscaping. And again, if you gave us the permission to chase this for a bid, then what we'll do is, we'll write up a statement of work, we'll make sure it's commensurate to other counties and state, and we'll go from there.
Any other questions on that? I haven't asked for a motion. I will entertain a motion, basically just to move forward, obtain those bids, to see about the.
Yeah, the request was to, you know, allocate the, the money for the project.
Okay. Allocating the money for the project. Apologize. So I'll entertain a motion to allocate up to twenty-one thousand dollars to do the landscaping for the courthouse, as well as all of the raised bids around the administration building.
So sorry, one more thing, we, we, so we went ahead and asked for two years' worth, but if y'all want to just do one, it's just, you know, he said he would lock in that price if we would, you know, and other landscapers might have the same philosophy, I would think. So that's why we went ahead and asked for two years, but, you know, that would be up to y'all if you wanted to change it.
Okay.
And this was, we did bring this, this was brought up because of complaints from the overgrowth on our properties.
I've heard those complaints come to me as well. And so I'll also include in that motion that I'm entertaining that it will be a two-year monthly maintenance. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well.
Thank you, all have a good evening.
Thank you. Last thing we'll do real quick before we take a, a break, we'll have our reports, the administrative report.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay. Supervisors report, Mr. Marshall.
Okay. On July fifteenth, I attended the Joint Planning Commission and Economic Development Meeting. I'd like to ask Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Overby to elaborate on this during their reports, since that's their committees. On July sixteenth, I attended the Town and Stewart Council Meeting. I would like to invite our chairman to start attending these meetings, as Stewart is our county seat and an important partner within Patrick County. Their next meeting will be on August twentieth at six P M. July twenty-third, I attended the regular Economic Development Authority Meeting. On July twenty-eighth, I toured several dams that Patrick County maintains. I concluded that there is no excuse to skimp on equipment that would make this work safer for our maintenance staff. July thirty-first, I, first, I attended the Special Tourism Advisory Committee Meeting. Again, I would respectfully request that Mr. Overby comment on the highlights of this meeting. On August fifth, my wife and I attended National Night Out, where Patrick Springs Volunteer Fire Department put on a great demonstration of extrication from a vehicle using various specialty cutting tools. It was very informative. All of your local fire departments need to buy or upgrade extrication equipment, so please donate if you can. It might be your own life, or the life of a loved one that you're saving by doing so. I would also like to thank Doug Perry, who in addition to all of the other work that he puts in for Patrick County, has consistently contributed his time and effort to this event as well. On July twenty-seventh and August eighth, I attended meetings with different groups to develop strategies for speeding up the installation of broadband and improving telephone communication for people in critical need. My hope is that the initiatives discussed at these meetings will yield results for the residents of Patrick County. August eighth, I also attended the Meadows of Dan Riordan Meeting, where Triton, the company handling Avesta Meadows of Dan Riordan fifty-eight construction, gave a presentation on the proposed expansion route. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kendrick?
I didn't have a whole, whole lot. We did go to a joint meeting with the EDA and the Planning Commission, and was a good meeting. We discussed goals that each one of us had for the good of the county, and like I said, it was a really good meeting, we need to do it more often. And I went to the National Night Out, too.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
So being July, a lot of my committees didn't meet. However, we were able to complete the bike wash at DeHart Park in Woolwind, I see DeHart Park, definitely a, a great addition, except that it's kind of hidden behind the restroom, so now we need to make a sign to let people know that it's back there. National Night Out, I certainly greatly appreciate all of our partners that come together to make our community so amazing, set up tables and provided information on how they serve the county. I greatly appreciate camaraderie with a lot of people in this room that I got a chance to laugh and carry on and joke with. And again, hats off to Clint Weadis and Company twenty-three for their demonstration of those extraction tools, excellent job. I've also had some questions about the reassessment and how it's going to affect the real estate taxes. And please, if I've missed something, please add to this. But state law says that a, a county, or we cannot have a, a whirl, a windfall due to a county reassessment. So no, your, your taxes will not go up, basically, what will, are within a small percentage. Is that? But state law says that a, a county, or we cannot have a, a whirl, a windfall due to a county reassessment. So no, your, your taxes will not go up. Basically, what will, are within a small percentage. Is that, that's correct, right? We can't get a windfall from...
Don't like, we're not really, we have no, you know what I'm saying? It hasn't started yet, we don't know what the values are.
Right, but state law says we can't get a windfall. So if they do increase by a lot, then the county has to make those adjustments. So basically, our revenue from the previous is about the same from after the...
That, that'll be something we, you know, work through in the next year and a half.
Okay.
But we do have a, a website that's drafted and, and ready to go live. We sent out a, a press release. We, Patrick County does the bare minimum, which is once every six years. Though you can't do it any less than that, so...
So as far as affecting taxes?
I think Doug's right, though. I don't think overall you can go up over one percent because of a reassessment.
The, the state law says that's, right. So at any rate, the county will need to reduce that, uh, tax, the, the tax rate. So I just wanted to get that information out there. So no, your property taxes are not going to go through the roof because of this reassessment. And then also, as Galen mentioned earlier about Fred Clifton Park in Lover's Leap, every park in the county has a committee, and they kind of oversee what goes on in the park. They do fundraising, except for Fred Clifton and Lover's Leap. So the comments that, that Galen said earlier that got me going up there, looking at it and, and looking at these things, and is, VDOT is going to completely rework Lover's Leap, basically, and they've got their schematics. I don't know if the Board, if, if we could ask the Parks and Rec to create of, or even tourism, or somebody to create of, a committee to represent Fred Clifton and Lover's Leap Park. By doing that now, is the state's doing their construction or whatever, if they have that vision, now's the time to work with the state, see if they can adjust and tweak some things. For example, to make an area that the, the park could rent for food trucks. So if they make a larger parking spot in the corner, we can rent space for food trucks to go up there, people can buy their food, sit there and have a nice picnic area where you can sit and enjoy the views and have lunch or something. But that committee would need to, to look at those things and put those things in place. And maybe that's a discussion the Board can have, or, or maybe Parks and Rec, or Mr. Housens with Tourism, if you could respectfully ask if they could create a committee to represent that and mold and develop that.
Not to be out of turn, one of the things I just want to let you know that is on our radar, and we, if you didn't read the paper last week, I did apply for EAC grant, so we're going to be doing some cleanup and painting at Fred Clifton Park, which we're very fortunate to have that. You know that our local maintenance, our local department does a good job of keeping it cleaned up. But again, to your site, to have a little bit more oversight, we still didn't do that on that.
And then while it's being recreated, something to, to develop that and to spit and polish. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Overby?
Besides everything that's already been mentioned, I did attend the Tourism Advisory Council Special Call Meeting on July the thirty-first. That was just to review and approve two sponsorship requests. Also attended the National Night Out, which was a, a very good opportunity to talk to a lot of constituents and families had a, from what I saw, families had a good time interacting with the sheriff's office, enjoying a good meal. It's definitely a good time for people to get together and, and learn about some things in the community. Company Twenty-three did an awesome demonstration of their extrication tools. So I encourage everybody to please come out next year, because it is good of me. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. End of July, I was actually asked about Virginia Farm Bureau to, to travel Tyson's Corner right outside of Washington, meet with urban legislators, talk about agriculture. Well, you can't talk about agriculture without talking about Patrick County, so I, I was able to talk with a lot of our elected officials up that way, a lot of people running for election up that way, to tell them about some of the problems we had down. As I like to say, west of ninety-five and south of sixty-four, the rest of Virginia. You know, listening to their budgets versus our budgets, there's a lot of difference between here and there. But anyway, they, they listen with open ears. I don't know the, whether my conversations helped a lot, but I at least tried. I did want to go ahead and have the administration look into research of what can be done with these dams and air at. I, I know there's no quick answer to it. There's going to take some looking into it, meeting with some different groups, but that is something that we can look into, you know, to try to get some benefit out of those. Also reviewing some of the contracts for leases and rental services that we have in the county, see how many of those we need to renew, how many of those we don't need to renew. You know, I know it's only August, but it'll be budget season before we know that again. Also, to answer a question that came up about the Fairystone Sitting Agreement Letter that went out, I approved that letter on April twenty-fifth, and it was sent out on April thirtieth. So they've had it since whenever the US Postal Service got it there, but like I said, it went out on April thirtieth. And that's all I have. With that, we are ready to enter into closed meeting.
Before you do that, you make your commitment that you have to talk about the Parks and New Business next month, please?
I will not guarantee that commitment, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, you guaranteed this one didn't do it.
I move that to board convening closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one to discuss and consider the following personnel matters. Public Service Authority, Blue Ridge, Mayo River, and Smith River Districts, Economic Development Authority at Large, Tourism Advisory Council, Peters Creek, Personnel Evaluation Plan, and pursuant to the Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A three, discussion of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in open meeting will adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A thirty, to discuss the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the county.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?